Okay, we'll go ahead and get started tonight. We're gonna get started by an invocation given by Pastor Mark Thompson of the Kingsburg First Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would please stand.
Lord, we just read in your scripture in James 1:17 that every good gift and every perfect gift is from above, coming down from the Father of lights. We thank you for all the good gifts you've given to us. Our city is blessed with good schools, is blessed with good police and fire department. We're blessed with a good city council. We're blessed with a mayor who cares for his city. For all the good gifts you've given to us, we just say thank you. We pray for more. We pray for more provision, protection, and most of all, we just pray that our city will be one that responds to you rightly. We ask for wisdom tonight as decisions are made. We ask to celebrate when good things happen, and we give credit to you and to you above. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can be seated. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Kingsburg City Council meeting tonight. We'll call this meeting in order, and Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
President.
Here.
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 Here. First, let's get started with an approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda's approved, thank you. And now we will have the presentation. First, there's gonna be a swearing-in and badge pinning ceremony for fire department personnel. The presentation's by Fire Chief John Benaski. Welcome, Chief.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city manager and staff, and fire department and police department people that are here. So I just wanna say welcome and thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak in front of the city council. As I warn the mayor, I'm normally a little bit more short-winded, but tonight, since this could be my last badge pinning of my career, I figured I would get a few more words in if possible. So if you can come up here, I'm talking to you on my speech, so here you go. All right, so this evening, we are here to welcome the Kingsburg Fire Department's newest employee, Madison Heredia. Madison has completed her firefighter-one academy at the College of Sequoias and her paramedic training at National University. She has several years of experience as a paramedic and has worked for the department as one of our part-time, single-role paramedics. This program has been a huge success, enabling paramedics to see what exactly the role is of the firefighters and life in the fire station. It is a program that should be expanded possibly in the future and used to send paramedics to the firefighter-one academy in order to meet the minimum qualifications for our firefighter paramedics. Madison, as you start your career, here are some pieces of advice for you to have a long, healthy, and satisfying career. You only have one body. With our life expectancies ever increasing, this one body of yours is going to have to last, so take care of it. Exercise, jog, run, lift weights, anything you actually like to do. Just take care of your body, your heart, and especially your mind. The grandmother you respond to in 15 years, who is trapped on the second floor of a home at 2:00 a.m., is going to need you to be in tip-top physical shape to pull her out without you requiring medical assistance. Oh, yeah, and with you will be a brand-new, super-fit, 20-something firefighter, and trust me, you will want to keep up with them. Again, please take care of your entire body. Real-life fire experience is more difficult than ever to come by, so it's imperative that you supplement yourself with realistic training and consistent preparation. Every skill you learned in the academy is a perishable skill. If you do not practice those skills, you will lose them. These skills are important. Imagine being faced down in a swimming pool waiting for someone to rescue you. That is why seconds matter, and knowing your trade is so important. People are jealous of those who are doing things better than them. If you do all the right things, excel, and bring positive energy to the firehouse and the department, you will have critics. Don't worry about the haters. They will always want to find fault in others. Unfortunately, those who are not happy with themselves tend to struggle to find honor in those who are. Don't let the critics slow you down or discourage you from your progress, because not only will you diminish yourself and change your values, but you will also give them something else to criticize. Regardless of your present rank or the rank you achieve in the future, respect those below you and above you equally. Remember how you were treated as a probationary firefighter. Make note of how it makes you feel, and choose to replicate those who motivated you and inspired you. Always show respect to others, regardless of whether it's city staff, citizens, or the fire chief. Everybody deserves the same treatment. Know that all your experiences have led you to where you are today. The more struggles you face, the more compassion you develop, the more connected to others you will become. Empathy is intuitive, but it's also something you can work on intellectually. Look to connect with others more than you seek to be better than others. Don't seek perfection. Perfection is not attainable and can lead to a host of negative outcomes. Seek excellence and progress and be okay with making and owning your mistakes, because guess what? We all make mistakes. Be microambitious. Be enthusiastic about whatever is right in front of you. Stop listening to those who tell you you need to know where you'll be in five, 10, or even 30 years from now. Start being dedicated to who you are today. Those who tell us we need to look to where we'll be 10 years ago, forget to look, are looking too far ahead and forget to miss the spark and the love that you have for today. Love those in your life. Check on people you haven't heard from in a while, and focus on being the best probationary firefighter/paramedic you can be, and have a wonderful, successful career, especially here with the city of Kingsburg and the Kingsburg Fire Department. We want to welcome you, and you're definitely one of the family now. All right, so we'll come around to the front, I guess, here. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm Madison Heredia.
I'm Madison Heredia.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
And defend?
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
For them domestic?
For them domestic.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to?
And allegiance to.
The Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Well and faithfully?
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties of public职务 about to enter?
Discharge the duties of public职务 about to enter.
Tradition, you put your hand down. Tradition is one of the reasons that we gather here tonight. It is to celebrate the pinning of our department badge on those who have proven their worth to join our ranks. The tradition of the badge itself dates back to the Crusades and the orders of St. John's and those of the Knights of Malta. The symbolism of badge has held the test of time, and it stands for simple, enduring truths. It shows the individual who wears a badge will serve those less fortunate with honor, integrity, gallantry, chivalry, and courage. This still rings true today in today's fire service and what we provide to the community. To all of you who will bear its weight, it is a commitment that cannot be taken lightly by chance or by whim. Therefore, every time you wear the symbol of the badge, whether it would be sworn in as the newest firefighter, promoted to a rank with more responsibility, or even maybe someday the fire chief, remember the trust it represents and the higher code of conduct we collectively must have. Nicole, please come forward. Here is your department firefighter badge. Again, welcome, and we're so glad to have you here, and I'm sure councilmen would love to hear from you.
Thank you very much for the warm welcome. I appreciate it, and thank you to the department for taking a chance, and yeah, just I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Thank you.
Welcome. Much, come on up. Everybody can grab pictures, family pictures.
So if you want your family to take a photo, feel free to stand up and come on up and take a good photo. The council will come down and see them in the back there. There you go. Family first, there we go.
You got it?
Yeah, I got it. Yes. Okay, go. Oh, you're just gonna do all this? I'll still move. Go. Who's on? You know, you sit. Stay, stay, stay. Okay. Here it is. Let me get in, I'll take a picture. Get in with them. Stay in with you.
Oh, I'm going?
Get all of you. Yay! I think you're the ten, too. Oh, me, too.
What's that? If you want me to, I'm the last person she has to take. Councilman?
Oh, yes. I don't know either. I know which one's mine.
Congratulations.
Grace, you want yours? I have yours, too. I don't know who's mine. I think it's yours. Okay, that's all right.
Just tell us which ones first.
I know. Perfect.
Chief, you want another one?
Yes.
All right. I had that photo chatting.
Three, two.
Thank you, Councilmember. Congratulations. And part of where I just wanna end is, is the one thing of coming from the outside of this agency is, I think, one of the, and I gotta give the credit to the past fire chiefs for sure, but the Kingsburg Fire Department is by far one of the most diverse-represented fire departments based on the population that I've seen out there. So it's really great that it mirrors the makeup of the community in a lot of ways. Having female firefighters is always a fantastic thing to bring to the organization, and how well and receptive all of the members are, and just the fact that it really just shows that it's one big group, and everybody likes to be part of that team and wear that badge and represent the city of Kingsburg and serve its citizens well. I can't say enough of what a great group of people they are in the Kingsburg Fire Department and what they do to serve. So again, thank you, and everyone from the fire department can go back to the fire station, and we've got cake and pieces there to celebrate your wonderful badge pinning and swearing-in. And again, welcome and thank you for coming and doing all you've done to be part of our team.
Thanks again, Chief, and we really do appreciate all your words. All right, we're gonna move on with our presentation from the Police Department of Police Department Personnel. Presentation's gonna be by Police Chief Neil Dadian. Chief, those were a lot of wise words before you. Good luck.
Well, that'll help me out with my brevity, then. It was well said, couldn't top it. Okay, thank you, Mayor Purcell, members of the council. Good to be with you. Again, thank you for having us and allowing us the opportunity to come before you and present some newly-promoted personnel. So first, I'd like to call forward Sergeant Derek Gagnon. Sergeant Gagnon was, Sergeant Derek Gagnon was born in Reedley and raised in Selma, attended local schools, and graduated from Selma High. Sergeant Gagnon attended and completed the post-basic academy at Fresno City College in November 2004. He began his law enforcement career as a community service officer with the city of Selma Police Department, serving in that capacity until May 2005. In May 2005, Sergeant Gagnon was promoted by the city of Selma Police Department to a full-time police officer position. During his career at the Selma Police Department, Sergeant Gagnon served as a patrol officer, K-9 handler, school resource officer, detective, and field training officer. Sergeant Gagnon occasionally assisted with specialty assignments, including the US Marshal's Fugitive Task Force, which involved apprehending violent criminals, and the County Gang Task Force. Sergeant Gagnon served 12 years with the Selma Police Department. In October 2016, Sergeant Gagnon began employment with the Kingsburg Police Department as a police officer. Since being employed with the city of Kingsburg Police Department, Sergeant Gagnon has served as a patrol officer, field training officer, school resource officer, and detective. Specific to his school resource officer duties, Sergeant Gagnon was also responsible for fulfilling and managing a state grant designed to reduce tobacco and vaping use in the schools and community. Sergeant Gagnon's responsibilities were to educate the students, parents, school staff, and the general public, conduct compliance checks on tobacco retailers, conduct covert and undercover operations on those retailers, and provide mentoring, counseling, and resources to the students in the Kingsburg School. And as a personal note, he did a fantastic job in that position. Sergeant Gagnon was promoted from his detective position to a police sergeant in July and is assigned as a patrol supervisor. Sergeant Gagnon has been attending Reedley College part-time since 2022 and is on track to graduate with his associate's degree in spring 2025, and very proud of him for doing that. Sergeant Gagnon is a longtime resident of Kingsburg, along with his wife Lori and their six children, Amber, Nathan, Alexis, Aubrey, Noah, and Elena. Sergeant Gagnon enjoys spending time with his family, traveling to different parts of Mexico, and experiencing those differences in culture. Sergeant Gagnon also enjoys coaching for the Kingsburg Lions Youth Football Program, which has been a part of for over eight years, and Sergeant Gagnon says he is blessed to live and work in such a unique and amazing community. I also wanna add a personal note that, on a couple things. Sergeant Gagnon is also the president of the Police Officers Association, and has done, and has been in and out of that position a couple times, has done a fantastic job in the community on a number of things, with community outreach, backpack giveaways, barbecues, just a host of things, deeply involved in the community, and because of that commitment, and he is also probably one of the people in my 40-plus years that I've seen blossom from, you know, a good working cop into a leader and supervisor. He's done a fabulous job of that. He really earned his place up here today. So congratulations to Sergeant Gagnon. Picture time? He wrote in his bio, in his spare time, he likes doing, I'm like, you don't have any spare time with six kids.
Ready? One, two, three.
All right. Next, I'd like to call up Lieutenant Jose Joey Salinas. Lieutenant Joey Salinas was born in McAllen, Texas, and raised in Parlier, California, attending local schools. Lieutenant Salinas graduated from the Tulare Kings Basic Police Academy at the College of Sequoias and began working for the Sanger Police Department as a reserve police officer and then full-time police officer in 1993. He worked in Sanger until 1996, when he was hired as a deputy sheriff for the Fresno County Sheriff's Office. Lieutenant Salinas spent the next 25 years working at the Fresno County Sheriff's Office. As a deputy sheriff, Lieutenant Salinas was assigned to patrol and homicide, and did seven years as a detective in the homicide unit, and that is like five lifetimes in dog years or something like that. That's a lot of work. In 2007, Lieutenant Salinas was promoted to sergeant and served as a field supervisor in the Court Services Unit and as the Rural Investigations Team Supervisor in the Multi-Agency Gang Enforcement Consortium, or MAGEC. In 2013, Lieutenant Salinas was promoted to lieutenant and worked as a watch commander, as an area commander in the South County, and then also that included command of the AGC Crime Task Force and Boating Enforcement Unit. In 2016, Lieutenant Salinas took over command of the Persons Crimes Unit in the Detective Bureau, which included homicide, sex crimes, elder abuse, and the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, or ICAC. Lieutenant Salinas retired in 2021 after a very distinguished career at the Sheriff's Office. In 2023, Lieutenant Salinas worked under contract for the Kingsburg Police Department, assisting us in supervising our investigations unit, developing our detectives, clearing old cases, and later as an acting lieutenant after the retirement of Lieutenant Pendley. Lieutenant Salinas was hired as a full-time police lieutenant in July of this year. Lieutenant Salinas has attended Fresno City College and has over 80 units, has completed over 80 units of coursework. Lieutenant Salinas has been married to his wife, Anna, for 30 years, and they have three adult sons, Gabriel, Michael, and Chris, who joined him here today, along with two of his future daughter-laws, Jackie Solario and Susie Ramirez, and also his mother, Gregoria Salinas. Lieutenant Salinas, Lieutenant Salinas's personal interests include camping, as they try and take their RV out at least four times a year, and having all boys, of course, whose other interests are watching and rooting for their favorite sports teams with his On a personal note, Lieutenant Salinas and I worked at the Sheriff's Department at the same time, but we never actually worked together. We never had assignments that were in the same unit or same commands. We always kind of, he was on one side of the shop and I was on the other side of the shop, which is not uncommon in a large organization. But what I'm excited about is having him here, because I know the quality of his work product. I know the leadership that he brings from his experience in law enforcement, and we're very appreciative of what he has done for us thus far and what he's about to do for us, and thankful to have him. Thank you, Lieutenant Salinas. More picture time.
One, two, three. One. Yep, okay. Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Again, my thanks to the council for allowing us this time to come before you and introduce our newly-promoted personnel. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Just one quick note for Lieutenant Salinas. Just talking about part of the reason that he was hired was actually, I don't know if anyone's ever had any of these tamales that she makes every year? But that was 50% of the reason we hired you, Joey, if I'm being honest. Thanks, Chief. Next, we're gonna go ahead and open for a public comment. This provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the city... Oh, you're really, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the Golden State Highway Construction Update. That presentation's gonna be by Terry Ogle, the Executive Director of the Fresno County Transportation Authority. I apologize, Terry, I skipped ahead.
No worries. Well, good afternoon or good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. Thank you for this opportunity to come and to speak with you today. I don't know if I can really top what just happened, but congratulations to everybody, and that's always a good thing to celebrate. So thank you very much for letting me be a part of that, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you all today. As mentioned, my name is Terry Ogle. I'm the Executive Director for the Fresno County Transportation Authority, and I'm here to give you a little bit of update on the Golden State Boulevard Corridor project that is running through the southern part of Fresno County. So this is just an overview of the project limits. It encompasses to the south here, the city of Kingsburg in the middle there, the city of Selma, and then on the north end, the city of Fowler. And so this is just an overview of the project that has been ongoing for a while. I'll run through these slides very quickly. This is just kind of what was planned or what was looked at on the project as we, as it was envisioned, kind of the overlay and the landscaping that was gonna be taking place. This gets us through the city of Kingsburg. This is Sierra Avenue right there. As we move outside of Kingsburg, and then these are two of the location, three of the interchanges or intersections at the intersecting Golden State, Shroud, Bethel, and then the last one there is Mountain View. So just what kind of what it looked like. Wanna kind of camp on this just real quickly. This is a, this is a map of kind of where we are right now with the Golden State Boulevard project. What you see in red there is, and green are areas that were not constructed underneath, under the current project that's ongoing and is just about to wrap up. And so you see that at Vine and at, or excuse me, Earl, Draper, and Shroud, Bethel, and Mountain View. That work was taken out of the project, and the reason it was taken out of the project was because of challenges and difficulty in dealing with Union Pacific in dealing with Union Pacific Railroad and getting the necessary agreements to do the work inside the Union Pacific Railroad. And so a decision was made. And there's a lot of data on this information on this page, but just wanted to highlight that the project's been around for about fifteen years. And on that, I'll go back to this slide here, that in twenty twenty-two, a decision was made to pull these areas out of the project in order to move the project forward and get it into construction while we continued to work with Union Pacific Railroad. And we continue to work with Union Pacific Railroad as this work in the blue has been completed and we're starting to wrap that work up. Again, that decision was made in about May of twenty twenty-two, where you see a one-hundred-and-one percent submittal in May ninth. That was the determination by the project team to pull these areas out of the project and move forward with the project. Kind of give you a little bit of where we are right now and the path forward is in January of twenty twenty-three. Fresno County informed FC TA and FC COG that the... Oh, excuse me. I jumped ahead of myself here. In January of twenty twenty-three, review comments came back from Union Pacific Railroad, triggering replacement of several warning devices or signal houses. And FC TA and COG and Fresno County began looking at various options to reduce costs. The project team stopped communicating with Union Pacific at that time. I think that was a mistake. And so what kind of happened after that was just a kind of a parallel into where we are right now. In October of twenty twenty-three, the project team came to each of the cities and informed the cities that they were looking at a two-crossing-per-city concept. There are nineteen crossings total in the project. And so this would minimize that to only six crossings. In March of twenty twenty-four, about a month after I assumed this position, I made a request to Mark Thomas, who's our consultant, to begin the design work and to go back to this picture here, to begin the design work to fill in the red. We can't, we still have issues or challenges with the green, but we can at least get the red done. So I asked them to get started with the design that we can complete the red and we can move forward with that and get that into construction. I also asked them to re-initiate coordination with Union Pacific to determine the status of all of the Union Pacific rail crossings throughout the whole entire project. In March of twenty twenty, in March twenty-five, Mark Thomas held a coordination meeting with Union Pacific and began updating the plans, providing submittals to Union Pacific, and that continues to go on to date. In May, Mark Thomas submitted revised set of plans to Fresno County so that we could initiate a change order to the current contract. And in May and June of seventeenth, about a month later, Fresno County sent Mark Thomas comments back. At that time, also Fresno County informed us that the cost of the change order exceeds ten percent of the total contract cost. And therefore, this work would be required to go out as a new bid package. So currently, Mark Thomas is working on updating the plans to create a separate bid package, anticipating that we will get that done in October, November. Mark Thomas informed us, and we talked to the cities last week, that on September sixth, that plan set will be submitted back to the city for review and for comment. That's all the cities and for Fresno County. And hopefully, we'll get a quick turnaround from them and we'll be on track to get this back into a bid package and get that back into construction. Hopefully, we'll bid later this year, early part of next year, depending on what kind of winter we have this year and what kind of construction window that we may have. We could be out as early as February if it's a mild winter, or we could be out as late as April if it's a heavy winter. Being that we are in an ag community and in an ag area, we kind of hope that we would have a wet winter for agriculture. But that is where we're at. All of the UPR rail crossings are with Union Pacific for review, with the exception of five that are in the city of Fowler. And so we had a meeting with Union Pacific yesterday. And we only have one of the nineteen approved, but we hope over the next three, about two to three months, that we'll have at least fifteen of those close to be approved so that we can move forward with the project. I will pause there. I've got a little bit more on my presentation, but I'll pause there if there are any questions that you would like to ask about the Golden State Boulevard project. Go ahead.
Good evening. A question, the red is what we're looking at, starting February, March, and April?
Correct.
Correct? And will you stagger doing those? Those areas won't be all closed at the same time in our city, correct?
They should not be. There should be coordination so that they can, at least, you know, one or every other one are closed. I think that would depend upon the city and the city giving a permit to Fresno County of which requirement that they would want to not close all of them.
It's Shroud, Bethel, and Mountain View?
It's Earl. I forget the name of the street.
So Draper.
Draper.
Shroud and Bethel.
Shroud, Mountain View, and Bethel.
Because those would be our main ways to get across town. Thank you. Is there progress?
I...
Finally.
I'm frustrated with the project, and I've only been on the job for six months. So I can imagine the people that have been dealing with this project for the last fifteen years. Union Pacific can be persnickive to deal with, and so it's...
I just had a couple. Is there any other questions for you guys?
I just had, yes, I did. I just had a question on the green portion. So we're talking about the red portion. So what lies ahead for the green portion?
So the green portion, and there's going to be some throwaway in the red. We're going to move forward and get the red paved as quickly as possible. We were hoping to get it started this year with a contract change order. And that kind of went sideways when we exceeded the ten percent of the contract value. The green is what Union Pacific calls self-perform work. Now, there is a little bit of contract work in there, but Union Pacific will be the one that performs that work under, you know, kind of a day labor or some kind of item like that. And so that will have to be coordinated with the city, coordinated with Union Pacific in order to get that work done. But we're going to pave the red. We're going to taper it down not to get in Union Pacific's right away. So there may be some overlap or some wasted work that we will have to come back and redo once the Union Pacific does their work.
But, okay, but those two things aren't done simultaneously, right? So the red would be done and then the green. So the roads would potentially be closed down two times.
Twice.
Twice. Okay. I just wanted to get clarity on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say that it has been frustrating for myself and a lot of the residents. Got some calls on it, you know, why'd they pave? Most of Golden State, but not these areas. I had to give them the reason why, you know. So I'm glad to hear that, Terry, that you guys are going to, you know, hopefully start that, you know, April or March or April, you know, get that taken care of. So it's good news to me and all that our residents know. The ones that have been giving me calls and stuff about that.
Well, I know your city manager has expressed on some of our calls some of his frustration, and so I understand that and sense that and feel that same frustration as well because why did... And I, you know, I wasn't here, but one of the things is why did we pull those out at the time? I understand they wanted to get the work done, but that means that we may have to come back and interrupt traffic one, two, three, maybe four times before we get it done. So I know that there's some frustration.
Yeah, it's frustrating when you're going nice and smooth because they did a good job. It's nice and smooth on Golden State, and then all of a sudden, you get that old road. It's pretty bad. So thank you.
I understand.
So is the plan still to reconstruct the intersections as we've been discussing? Or has the plans changed at all in these areas?
Nothing has changed. There'll be a series of reconstruct, overlay in the green area. You know, the Union Pacific comes and puts those wide concrete panels between the tracks and everything. So those are some of the things that Union Pacific will be doing as part of this work. They'll also be revamping their signals where those locations are as well.
Thank you.
Specifically talking about a couple of things. So on Bethel, Golden State, that area has been repaved as of recently. Who paid for that?
I believe that was the city of Kingsburg.
I believe it. I believe it was. And that's part of my frustration with this is this, the lack of doing what they said they were going to do is now costing us money. It'd be one thing if it's just like, we just have to be patient, but now it's costing money because, you know, we have a certain obligation to make sure these things are safe streets. And we've had to step in and do some of that work, which is frustrating. Other concern that I have is specifically to these Phase Three. Each one of these intersections are going to be multimillion-dollar renovations because of the railroads. Is that correct? When you're changing the structure, the signaling is going to have to be different. They're going to require updated signals, updated arms. And that's going to be this project, Measure C, paying the railroad to have that work done. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
So I guess my question with that now is, is there money left in Measure C for that? Or is this going to be all contingent upon Measure C passing again?
That is a good question and has a good segue into the rest of my presentation. But the short answer to that is yes, we have money to complete the project. Even the trail portion of the project, which had been pulled out as well as part of this, let's get the project started. But there is money set aside. There is a potential project in the rural area that's not going to be delivered. And so there is some savings on that particular project. So we looked at that last week when we were talking about the cost increase. And right now, we're still under our allocation that we've allowed it for this project.
So for Phase Three, as that rolls out, are you planning on working that south to north? Obviously, we're the furthest south town. Or is that going to be a north-to-south renovation for timelines?
What it will be is whenever we get all of the rail crossings approved...
All nineteen?
No, all in a particular jurisdiction. So if we get, let's see that, about five here. If we get those five approved from Union Pacific, then we will move forward with those five. And I think the ones that are going to drag behind are the five that are in Fowler because they're not with Union Pacific right now. But that's our goal, is when we get approved. And we had that discussion with Union Pacific Railroad yesterday is, okay, once we get these done in a certain jurisdiction, if there's one or two that's left, then we need to, we want to change our priority to prioritize those over, say, the five that are in Fowler that are just in the queue to get those done.
Yeah, my concern with that is that they're going to run out of money. And whichever ones get done first are the ones that are going to get done. So that's why I'm wondering how you prioritize them. And I appreciate the efforts you guys are going through with the railroad. They liked to remind us that they were here before us.
They do. They do. I mean, if the council would just lend me about two or three more minutes, I will give a little update on Measure C. I want to start out with some statistics that I have found. And the American Society of Civil Engineers does an evaluation of America's infrastructure every four years. And so the last one they did was in twenty twenty-one. And they write in their report that American roads are critical for moving an ever-increasing number of people and goods. However, these vital lifelines are frequently underfunded, and over forty percent of the system is now in poor or mediocre condition. And if you drive around Fresno County, if you drive around your own city, that there are areas that you would say that my streets are falling apart. I live in Reedley, and as I drive through the streets of Reedley or drive out to Reedley on whatever way that I go to get there, I notice that there's a deterioration. As the backlog of rehabilitation needs grow, motors are forced to pay twelve hundred, over twelve hundred dollars every year in wasted time and fuel. Additionally, while traffic fatalities have been on decline, this number was kind of surprising to me that over thirty-six thousand people are still dying on the nation's roads every year. And a number of pedestrian fatalities are on the rise as well. If you watch the news, I think there were three or four fatalities this week on the roads that Channel Thirty covered. So in this area, there were at least three or four fatalities due to, you know, due to the highways. On our nation's highways, the roads and roads, our nation's highways and roads move seventy-two percent of our nation's goods are over seventeen trillion dollars, our nation's goods. And forty-three of our, forty-three percent of our public roads are in poor or mediocre condition. The report goes on to say that public investment in U.S. infrastructure as a share of the gross domestic product has fallen more than forty percent since the nineteen sixties. The World Economic Forum now ranks the United States thirteenth when it comes to the overall quality of infrastructure. And just some examples of the nation's failing and aging infrastructure is more than forty-five thousand U.S. bridges, and one in every five miles of road is in poor condition. There is a water main break every two minutes, and an estimated six billion gallons of treated water are lost each day. There are thirty thousand miles of inventoried levees across the U.S. and additional ten thousand miles of levees whose locations and conditions are unknown. And I say all that because we've come to Measure C. So in the late seventies and early eighties, there was limited infrastructure funding, not just in the nation, but in California as well. We had incomplete freeway systems, payment deterioration, potholes, other payment failures, congested streets and roads and highways, and deficient structures. Kind of sounds like a lot about where we are right now. And then a grassroots effort took place in the mid-eighties, nineteen eighty-six. Adopted in nineteen eighty-six and then renewed in two thousand and six, Measure C has transformed the transportation landscape in Fresno and Clovis metro area as well as Fresno County. Measure C has been widely successful due to its focus on transportation needs in Fresno County. Measure C has a great story to tell. You know, we think about the Fresno-Clovis area, but Mountain View would not be four-laned. Academy would not be four-laned. Jensen would not be rehabbed. Herndon would not be four-laned through most of the city and out into the country, and neither would Shaw. And that doesn't include any of the other streets that are out on the west side. So it has a great story to tell. It has improved our freeway system, our local streets and roads, and our local and rural transit system. Under the current measure, thirty-five percent of the Measure C revenues go directly to local agencies and road maintenance and street repairs. And then this statistic is something that I've learned over the last six months is over the past thirty-seven years, Fresno County has been able to leverage over eight billion dollars in transportation because Measure C has been able to provide matching funds. Eight billion dollars is about what the current cost of high-speed rail is. And so we've been able, over the last thirty-seven years, to generate eight billion dollars in Fresno County because of Measure C, being able to leverage that. This is just a pie chart of how the money is distributed right now under the current measure. But what does that mean to Kingsburg? So Kingsburg, over the last thirty-seven years and mostly in the last twenty years, State Route Two-O-One, which is Sierra Street, from State Route Ninety-Nine to Tulare County was rehabbed back in two thousand. That was under the original measure, had a price tag of five-point-eight million. That would probably be about a fifteen-million-dollar job in today's dollars. Mountain View from Bethel to the Tulare County line was widened to four lanes in twenty fifteen. That had a price tag of eighteen-point-five million. And then the Golden State Boulevard project, which I just talked about earlier, the portion that's in Kingsburg is a twenty-five-million-dollar improvement and the trail being two-point-five-six in addition to that twenty-five million. So the Golden State Boulevard, or all three of these projects were fully funded, are totally funded by Measure C. There was no additional funds from other sources. There was no additional, there was no additional funds, um, from other, from other sources. And then down at the bottom here is on annually, um, Measure C has what they call a pass-through funds that come to the city of Kingsburg since two thousand and seven. And that's just a, just a summary of what, uh, what happened. Um, annually, you all get about five hundred and eleven thousand, thousand dollars um, for these, for these various things that you, that, that we have here. Set to expire in twenty twenty-seven, FCT and COG is starting efforts to place the Measure C renewal um, on the ballot in November of twenty twenty-six. The second renewal of Measure C has the potential to raise from two point eight billion to five billion dollars depending on the duration and es- and escalation rates. If that money's able, being able to leverage, it was about a seven to one ratio. So seven times two point eight or seven times, um, five, we could be able to leverage up to thirty-five billion dollars in transportation over twenty or thirty, thirty-year, thirty-year time period. Measure C would continue to regional commitment to improving air quality, delivering roads and street repair maintenance, controlling congestion, providing mobility to all Fresno County residents through the programs it funds. I wanna conclude by saying that, um, recent developments in the urban area, Clovis and Fresno, is the city of Clovis voted to put a measure on the ballot back in August of two thousand and five. The council approved a measure to, um, increase their sales tax by one percent in the city of Clovis. The city of Fresno is, 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 is talking about that as well. And so, um, if Measure C goes away or doesn't pass, and those two do pass, then it will decimate the, the rural communities. And so that includes Kingsburg, that includes Reedley, where, where I live. Um, and so statistically, there is not enough population in the rural part of Fresno County to overturn a, a vote in the urban area. And so, um, I don't, don't wanna conclude by saying this is a doomsday because we are working behind the scenes with both the city of Clovis and the city of Fresno on, uh, on an initiative and we're, and we're actually moving forward, um, with the renewal of Measure C. But if there's three tax initiatives on the ballot, um, in twenty twenty-six, the likelihood of any one of them passing is going to be pretty, is, I'm gonna be highly unlikely. And so, um, I'm here, I'm going to all, all the rural counties, all the rural cities in the county, um, and, and sharing the same information with them, the same mess, same message with them that, uh, we're, we're moving forward with Measure C renewal. It has been a tremendous, um, success for the entire county. And, uh, I wanna see it continue. And, uh, I, one of the things is, is, is the two urban cities have benefited the most from the last two measures. And, uh, maybe there's some, maybe there's some need for a change in, in the, the way that the formulas are generated. So with that, I will conclude. I'll answer any questions at, at this time and I'd be happy to come back at a later, a later time if you, if, if you're so inclined.
You have any questions from council?
Nope.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
No, no worries, no worries. I dropped, I brought some, uh, annual reports, um, for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. And I'll just leave them here with the clerk here. Um, to thank you, welcome. I have plenty more if you want, if you want more. But thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, now we'll move on to public comment for real. This provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest to the public within the council's jurisdiction, which are not already on the agenda for this evening. It is the policy of the council not to answer questions impromptu. Speakers should limit their comments to not more than five minutes. For each item which is not on the agenda this evening, members of the public will provide an opportunity to address the council as each item is brought up for discussion. Do we have any members from the public that would like to address council? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment and move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar, items on the consent calendar are considered routine and include a recommendation from staff and shall be acted on in one motion by the council. If a council member requests additional information or would like to pull an item for discussion, that item shall be pulled from the consent calendar and acted upon separately. A council member may register an action on an individual item without pulling the item from the consent calendar. A motion to approve the consent calendar is deemed to include a motion to waive the full reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. For adoption of ordinances, only those which received a unanimous vote of the council members present at introduction shall be eligible for placement on the consent calendar. Tonight, we have items one through five. Do we have any members from council that would like to pull any items from consent? Do we have any members from the public or staff that would like to pull any consent items? Okay, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We'll move on to item six, our regular calendar. This is a code enforcement update presentation by building official A.J. O'Connell, sponsored by the Community Development Department. Welcome, A.J.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. A.J. O'Connell, building official. It is my pleasure to present to you the code enforcement update for the first six months of the calendar year twenty twenty-four. It is our intention to provide the council with regular updates at six-month intervals regarding the efforts of code enforcement staff, the data regarding the number and types of cases generated, and to relay observations from our professional staff from field inspections. In the first two quarters of calendar year twenty twenty-four, code enforcement staff engaged in a robust and active effort within the Kingsburg community. Through both proactive and reactive collaborations with property owners, tenants, business owners, and concerned citizens, our code officers were a dynamic presence within our city. Defined, code enforcement is the prevention, detection, investigation, and enforcement of violations of statutes and ordinances regulating public health, safety, welfare, public works, business activities, and consumer protection, building standards, land use, and municipal affairs. Acting as a critical function of local government, code officers utilize a variety of techniques and mechanisms to gain compliance with duly adopted codes, regulations, and standards. The first attachment in your staff report is a model of property compliance elements. This process guides our code enforcement efforts within the city. I cannot emphasize enough that our code officers see themselves as educators first, with the task of actively working with our community members, hand in hand, to abate violations. Our officers feel that through customer service, compassion, empathy, and adherence to adopt codes, we can be just one part of preserving the Kingsburg experience. My presentation tonight will be primarily based on comparing data from Q one, Q two, twenty twenty-four to Q one, Q two, twenty twenty-three. While there are some extenuating factors to consider when analyzing the data, this comparison-based model does give the reviewer an adequate means to determine the effectiveness of the code efforts. Three hundred and thirty-eight separate code cases were generated in Q one, Q two, twenty twenty-four, which is a twenty-six percent increase from the same period in twenty twenty-three. Of those cases generated, code enforcement staff engendered sixty-six percent of them through proactive inspections in the community. In twenty twenty-three, this was fifty-six percent. This jump in proactive cases is indicative of the active efforts of our code officers out in the community and working with property owners to obtain compliance with our codes and standards. Q one, Q two, twenty twenty-four saw an overall drop in the percentage of reactive, complaint-based cases generated. However, the overall gross number of those reactive cases stayed relatively the same from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Thirty-four percent of the cases generated were classified as property maintenance. The number of cases in this classification saw a one hundred and twenty-seven percent increase year to year. While this may seem like a statistical outlier, the reason for this jump in cases can be easily explained. Our code officers are ensuring that all observable violations on properties are cited as well as a reorganization of weed abatement efforts into this category. An example of this classification can be seen on page nine of your attached data and pictures in your packet. Can you go down just a little bit? Thanks. One more. At first glance, the violation of parking on the lawn is clearly evident. However, this particular example also reveals that the dwelling lacks an address. In this case, the property owner was given a courtesy notice that cited the parking violation and the violation of the property maintenance code for not having an address on the dwelling. Hence, the classification of this particular case into the broader category of property maintenance per the report. Seventy percent of the cases resulted in a final disposition of just a courtesy notice being issued by code officers. This type of notice is intended to educate property owners of violations. It is not an order or a citation, but rather a tool used to obtain voluntary compliance. Notices of violations, formal declarations of public nuisances, represent a just shy of twelve percent of the case dispositions. This percentage also represents the number of administrative citations that were issued for violations, with the total amount being assessed in Q one, Q two of nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. This data that I have been describing can only be initiated through onsite inspections by our code officers. This includes initial inspections, postings, and follow-up inspections. Working together, our part-time neighborhood improvement officer and I conducted a total of nine hundred and thirty site inspections in Q one, Q two. In twenty twenty-three, this number was three hundred and ninety-nine, which represents a one hundred and thirty-three percent increase. This staggering increase can be attributed to more consistent staffing, scheduling of after-hours and weekend enforcements, better utilization of our resources to pursue proactive inspections, and diligence with following up on notices and orders written. While the numbers given here today portray this vigorous, the vigorous code enforcement efforts, the real credit for the success has to rest with the citizens of Kingsburg. Of the cases generated in Q one, Q two, twenty twenty-four, a whopping ninety-five percent of them have already been closed. In fact, one hundred percent of the cases that were gen- generated in January have already been closed as of today. That were, to have an overall compliance rate this high is, in my experience, absolutely extraordinary, but it's hardly surprising. The people of Kingsburg generally see our code enforcement officers as a positive force for good. Our neighbors see their properties as a key reason why Kingsburg is such a desirable place to live, work, and play. From a staff level, I have to extend my gratitude to the people of Kingsburg for their hard work, commitment to vitality, and understanding the importance of code enforcement. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, A.J. Do we have any council questions?
I do, I appreciate all you do. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
So this, this shows as informational only. Are we supposed to accept the quarterly reports, or is it just informational?
Just information.
Okay. Awesome. Thanks, A.J. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, A.J.
Okay, next we'll move on to item seven, the Kingsburg Healthcare Grant, presentation by Fire Chief John Menaski.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Uh, welcome again here. Um, this evening before you, you have the, uh, newly entered into agreement from the Kingsburg Healthcare District with the city of Kingsburg to help offset the cost for, um, in essence, fifty percent of an, of the second ambulance. The, uh, this is a great renewal. We had this opportunity that was brought forward three years ago to the healthcare district to help staff a second ambulance. Um, the benefits of the second ambulance, so we have about four hundred and eighty calls historically before we brought on the second ambulance that we were not able to serve. So we had to wait for either Selma Fire Ambulance to come in or Sequoia Safety out of Reedley or their Parley or Dine Uwe to come in. And then if not, it comes all the way from Fresno or out of Visalia or even, as a matter of fact, Hanford is where the ambulances come from at that point. So having the second unit has been, um, a tremendous improvement for us. It's increased our daily staffing that we used to only have four people on duty. Now we have six. So a pretty significant increase in the staffing. The issue that comes with that is, is I can't generate more calls and I can't generate more people to transport. So it's kind of one of those things of the, uh, laws of physics of how many people actually require the transportation to the hospital where we are. So with that increase of where we are, on average, we do about twenty-three hundred patients a year that we transport. Um, and of that, and the breakdown of where it costs us is, is we generate about seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars or so across those twenty-three hundred, uh, patients in insurance revenue, Medicare, Medi-Cal reimbursement back to the city. Then through our government programs, since we're a government provider, we then recoup an additional amount of funds. And it brings us in right around three million dollars, two point nine, three million dollars. Well, the total cost, if I add up what we pay for, for two ambulances, crews, the fire, half fire chief, half of Orlando, keep the lights on, diesel fuel, capital outlay to replace the equipment, all those, that cost runs right about three point four million. So what I need is, is either supportive two things. One is, is more patients to call, which is never a good thing, or the assistance from the healthcare district. And this is where it comes in, is this partnership with the healthcare district. The healthcare district has stepped up again for a three-year commitment. The last one was weird because it was fifty percent of the staff for, uh, the second ambulance. It just makes a lot more work for our finance division in that, to calculate all that. So proposed to them this year, how about you just pay for the three paramedics that are on the second ambulance? It makes our financial reporting a, uh, lot easier. The other, only other change to the legal agreement from where it was, the previous one, is, is they required quarterly, uh, reports, I convinced them, that said, the city will front the money for the employees. This agreement actually goes back to July one for the fiscal year. And then after we finish up in December thirty-first with half the year, we'll submit for reimbursement and give them basically a semi-annual reports. We only have to go there twice and ask for the reimbursement back for the money. And it's about four hundred and five thousand, a little bit of change, over the next three years. And, um, that then helps us fully fund the second ambulance and for us to continue with that, um, process. The other part that really helps us with is, is our retention of the second am- or the second ambulance really helps us to retain our employees. Because I've got some good data, part of our mastermind we looked at, about third, what we call unit-hour utilization. So basically, how much of a twenty-four hour shift they're committed to calls. That unit was in the high twenty percent range. Thirty percent is what the, uh, well, the international, this is like the only one I'm ever aware of too. I always use this one as my example. The, uh, Indian International City Manager Association, they used to have these green books that tell city managers of how to do, run all their different divisions within the city. Used to be at twenty-five percent. And the International Association of Firefighters, what they call busy units, when they're too busy, unreliable, is at thirty percent. So I want to know that a government agency is less than the actual labor union. Um, I don't know how that, how that worked out or how it's been amended, but we were exceeding the ICMA one and good government, but we are still a little bit below the, uh, IFF number when we only had one ambulance. We were really starting to really crush those crews. They were committed, you know, over, you know, eight, about eight, uh, hours, eight to ten hours on calls at the hospital or transporting. So, you know, a third of the day, we didn't have an ambulance available to respond. So that really just shows how busy that unit was and where it was. Now that we've done that, we've dropped them down to both about twelve percent. So, and then if you look at concurrent call, calls, it really enables us to have that second unit. So that's really where it does. So we're just not beating up the poor firefighter, uh, EMT and the paramedic by being out there so much along with the required training and all the other things we ask them to do. So that's the other benefit of the second unit. And it's good cooperativeness from the healthcare district, and it's actually in their original formation of the ability to, uh, support not a ambulance service, and it doesn't even have to be their own, but within their, within their, what serves their district. So it's actually part of the hospital districts when they were formed. That mission was in their actual, uh, organized charter or how they were formed. So it goes right back to directly what that funding should be used for. Kind of available for questions? Um, so far, here's the work, and that's where we are.
Questions for council?
I just had, I just had a couple of comments. So, you know, as I sit through some of these healthcare district meetings, I just wanted to say thank you to you, um, for seeing this all the way through to fruition. I know that you laid out a clear case for, hey, the second ambulance is a necessity for the city. We no longer have a hospital, so, you know, when we have to transport individuals, it's to usually greater distances, which takes up an ambulance's time and paramedic's time. So, um, I appreciate you working with the healthcare district, and I appreciate the healthcare district for seeing the value and, uh, to not only the community.
I was a little nervous there at the end.
What's that?
I was a little nervous the last Wednesday's meeting.
Well.
For, for a few minutes.
Yeah, but at the end of the day, that, I believe they did the right thing. And it, it's, it's good for the community. And, and since we don't have a hospital, it makes, you know, perfect sense to me. And so I, I appreciate the fact that they saw that and that you saw that all the way through. So thank you for your efforts and your help there.
Thank you. And what I am working and trying to lay the groundwork for, it appears there is, just so everybody's aware, is, is trying to get away from- so everybody's aware, is trying to get away from this three-year agreement, that they could technically, I believe, through their budget, directly fund the ambulance through a transfer without an agreement. So, what my hope is, is that that four hundred grand becomes part of their budget, it comes back to the city, and that is just a direct transfer, so we don't have to come back three years from now and do this, you know, beg and plead for the assistance that we need. But, so hopefully, we can continue down that path.
Okay, so the recommended action by council is to authorize the acceptance of the Kingsburg Healthcare District funding for the reimbursement of employee costs for three firefighters in the amount of four hundred and five thousand dollars per year. And what entertain motions for that?
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, Council, thank you so much. I'd stay for the rest, but.
Enjoy your voice.
Pizza's getting cold.
There's no pizza. Only dessert. Thank you.
Okay, item eight, the November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four City Council election cancellation. This presentation is by City Clerk Abigail Palsgarden.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Prusell Jr. and council members. The California election law allows cities to forego the expensive election process for council seats where a candidate is running unopposed and therefore is guaranteed to be the successful candidate upon completion of the election. These candidates may be appointed to their council seats. The person appointed shall qualify and take office and serve exactly as if elected at a municipal election for the office. As of the closing of the nomination period on August ninth at five PM, there is only one candidate for District Two, the incumbent Laura North, and only one candidate for District Three, the incumbent Brandon Prusell Jr. The California Elections Code one zero two-two-nine states that the city clerk must certify these facts to the governing body of the city, which is you guys tonight, inform them of the following courses of action they may take. Number one, you may appoint to the office the person who's been nominated, or you may appoint to the office any eligible elector if no one has been nominated, or the third option is to hold the election if either no one or one person has been nominated. A notice of these courses of action must be published in the newspaper of general circulation, and council may not take action on the appointment till after the fifth day following the date of publication. A notice was published in the Fresno Business Journal and posted in front of City Hall on August fourteenth, which is more than five days before tonight's meeting. Staff recommends appointing Laura North to District Two and Brandon Prusell Jr. to District Three by taking separate actions. One action approving Resolution twenty-two-four dash zero-four-zero, appointing Laura North, and one action approving Resolution twenty-two-four zero-four-one, appointing Brandon Prusell Jr. And just to note also, by making this appointment tonight, there will, it closes the opportunity for any write-in candidates. So, I just want to make sure you guys were aware of that. That concludes my presentation. Please let me know if you have any questions or need clarification.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this?
How much?
Come on up.
Six thousand dollars.
Six thousand, okay. So, that's the savings.
Yeah.
That's the estimated savings.
Uh, the question, just for record, was likely going to be, how much is the savings if we forego having our names on the ballot?
Yes.
Other council discussion? Okay, so this is going to be two separate motions. The first one would be to adopt twenty-two-four dash zero-four-zero, and that would be to forego the election and place Laura North.
Can I even vote on this? Like, do I need to excuse myself?
I think you have to, Laura.
Okay.
You, you won't have to, Laura. I'd be honored to make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, the next would be for twenty-two-four zero-four-one, which would be to forego District Three, which would place me in that seat for another four years.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any opposed? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You guys will be seated at the second December meeting as normal, unless present on your certifies every day.
Okay. Thank you, Abby. Appreciate that. Moving on to item nine, the Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant Application Candidate Project. Presentation by City Engineer Dave Peters.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. A couple of weeks ago, we were here presenting the local road safety plan. Uh, it listed several, um, facilities in the city that had high safety concerns, and I said at that time that we would probably be selecting one of those locations and applying for a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant to fund those improvements, and I promised to come back and tell you which project that we were going to be focusing on, so that's what I'm here to do tonight. So, the four, um, locations that had the, the biggest safety issues were Sierra and Simpson had twenty-six crashes, Tenth and Kern had ten, Stroud and Tenth had nine, and Stroud and Eighteenth had six. So, we were really looking at the top two, and the issue with attacking Sierra and Simpson is that it's, you know, it's a multi-agency type project. So, Simpson Street's the city, Sierra Street's Caltrans, there's a railroad involved. And when you pursue those projects, um, you know, you do the best job of scoping them in the grant application, but then as those complicated, larger projects go on, and you heard that tonight through the Golden State Boulevard project, that, you know, the scope can creep, costs can increase, and with this Highway Safety Improvement Program, there's really no mechanism to get additional funding or anything. So, if the costs go up, we would have to fund that difference. And the other thing is, with this program, Caltrans and the, and Union Pacific Railroad would really serve as just permitting, uh, or permitting agencies. They wouldn't really be our partner in it or a stakeholder. And I think a better grant program to pursue that project would be the Section one-thirty project through the Division of Rails at Caltrans, because you apply for those grants together. So, we would be like co-applicants, Caltrans, the city, and railroad would be co-applicants. Everybody's a stakeholder. And in that program, there is flexibility with the funding as the scope increases. So, I would say we, we focus on that. I'm actually involved in one of those projects in Fowler. It's going real, very well. And so, uh, we're here tonight to recommend that we pursue the Tenth and Kern improvements, and I wanted to give you a little bit of a look at the three alternatives that, that we're looking at. We're still evaluating it. The applications due on the ninth. Why don't you, yeah, just hit the first one. So, uh, you, I'm sure you guys are familiar with this intersection. It's, uh, Tenth and Kern over by Roosevelt School. So, it has some unusual geometry that we think we can, we can kind of clean up. This alternative includes kind of squaring off the crosswalk on the north side of the intersection. Currently, it's, it's a very diagonal skew, and adding a speed table. So, a speed table is about a three-inch elevation in the pavement at the location of the crosswalk with, um, pretty gentle tapers up to that. And you see that, um, they're, these are being placed, um, a lot around schools. So, what it does is it makes the pedestrians more visible, causes the vehicles to slow down, acts as a traffic calming device. And that's one of the big issues here is, is speeds on Tenth, both from southbound and also northbound. So, um, the other improvement, and you'd have to scroll down a little bit to see it, but I can explain it, is adding on the, on the northbound approach, adding a speed feedback sign. So, that would essentially alert vehicles that, hey, you're, this is your, this is the speed limit, this is the speed you're going. And believe it or not, those are very effective. They've done studies and found that they're very effective, and over a long period of time, not just the first month or two, that they're up, over a long period of time, just, people just don't like to drive and have a sign telling them that they're not driving the speed limit. Um, and then you can see we're realigning the, the, if you could scroll up a little bit more, Abby, we're realigning the curb, uh, on the north side of Kern Street, um, on the, the east leg, to kind of, um, allow for that crosswalk to be squared up, and remove a little bit of that unnecessary wide pavement. So, we think all these improvements will, will definitely reduce, reduce accidents and increase, increase safety. Um, and it, it's a lower cost, too, so it's, uh, as I mentioned in the report, one of the biggest metrics for scoring these projects is the benefit-cost ratio. So, if you get a lot of benefit for not very much cost, which this, this alternative seems to fit in that category, that's a good thing, and your project will score higher. But we do have a couple other alternatives we're looking at. Could, could you hit the next one, please? So, this is a traffic circle, not to be confused with the roundabout. So, the, the middle part of that would be, um, a mountable concrete, reinforced concrete mound, so you could drive over it, emergency vehicles could drive over it if they needed to, but vehicles would be directed around it in a, in a roundabout-type fashion. So, we have a similar, one of these, um, traffic circles in the Union Community Partners subdivision on Tenth, just south of, of Cam, the newer subdivision by Veterans Park. And it seems to be working pretty well. Um, but this also allows us to, um, square up that, that crosswalk on the north side, pulls the other crosswalks back a little bit, adds the splitter striping. So, it's, it, it'll operate very similar to a roundabout, but it'd actually be classified as a traffic circle. The buses would be able to get in and out of it very easily, so. And then the last one. And then, so this is a more traditional, just traffic signal, um, installation. Again, the, the, the wide pavement on the east leg of the intersection is being reduced so that we can reduce the skew in the, in the crosswalk on the north side, and then this would be just a, a more traditional traffic signal location. So, we're, we're awaiting some traffic count information that we've, that we've, uh, ordered, and will, the big concern here is if, if you're heading southbound and you get a red light, are you going to queue back up into the school and head to Tenth and Draper? So, that's something we need to take a look at. But, uh, these are the three things that we're continuing to develop, the, the applications due on the ninth, and then, um, the strategy is going to be just to focus on, once we, once we're able to develop these a little bit more and plug them into the benefit-cost analysis tool, that's, you have to, it's an online tool that you have to use out of Berkeley, uh, it'll give us the B over C, and then we'll focus on the, the alternative that has the best benefit-cost ratio. That'll give us the best chance of getting funded, so. That's it. If you have any questions, we have your answer.
I have lots.
Kick it off.
Okay, first question. Have you, because that is a school area, have you shown this to the school?
We have not. We intend to, though. We started reaching out today to make contacts, telling them the, about the different alternatives, and trying to get to the right person to share this with. We're also going to ask for a letter of recommendation from the school.
Okay. So, starting with this one, I'm going to share, like, just a few concerns, so maybe from the education perspective.
Sure.
Um, I'm concerned about a light, because what do we all do when it's yellow? We don't slow down. And, like, headed that way straight into a school light, that concerns me a little bit. I do like the option, though, that there is a stop on that road. Um, the roundabout one? Can you go up? Thank you. So, I heard you mention it's okay for buses, because the bus, the big bus area is just where the word Kern is. The turn-in is right there.
Yeah.
So, they would be coming all directions.
Yeah.
And it would be a lot of times a day, so that wouldn't be an issue?
Yeah, no, we run the bus turning templates on, on this, on that geometry already, and it works, yeah.
They wouldn't be going on the curb in the middle, like we do out on the?
That, so, so there's a center, um, there's a center mound that you could actually mount if you wanted to, and then the hatched circle around that is like a, uh, an apron. They would, they would track onto the apron, but not on the mound.
So, each time they come around this turnabout, turn, the roundabout, they're headed into a crosswalk. Right? Those are crosswalks?
Yes, right.
So, like, coming around that curve and then stopping, like, I would, I don't know what that would do to back up traffic, especially in the morning, because you're going to have everybody crossing before and after school, so that would be?
Yeah, we, we have pretty sophisticated modeling tools that allow us to put in the pedestrian and vehicle counts, and it'll, it'll predict all, how that entire operation will happen, yeah. So, those are some things that we're looking at as well.
Okay. And then, um, the first one, please? On this one, so when I was reviewing the council packet, I didn't see all of these pictures.
Yeah, we just finished them.
Okay. So, I didn't, so, but the option, when I was, like, going through all of this and looking at what, like, in my opinion, coming from the school.
Yeah.
What I thought would be a good one was the, the third option, the installation of the CT devices.
Yeah.
It says such as LED enhanced stop signs, but I didn't see stop signs here, like, on the, only on this, it's not a four-way stop?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we, we, um, uh, we're, we're not excited about how a four-way stop would work, um, but if we did do a four-way stop, I don't think it would be beneficial to try to submit a grant application, because the costs are just not enough to really warrant trying to go after a grant.
It's the, the accident that?
We are going to look at that as part of our analysis, but if, if for some reason we went in that direction, if that's the best option, I don't think we need to get a grant to do that, because it's, it's not very costly to put those in.
So, the, the accident that was right before one of our council meetings in the spring was, the person was driving, um, from Tenth North, and the person on the cross street ran the stop sign.
Right.
So, and then the vehicle ended up into the?
Yeah, that's a lot of the crashes that we're seeing, is rightaway collisions from the, the people, they either, they don't, don't stop at the stop sign, or they stop, and then they go and then get hit. So, that's, part of the thing is, is the speeds on Tenth is an issue, and then, and then the, the kind of the funky geometry of the intersection, I think, contributes to that as well, so.
So, with the intersection, that geometry, plus where that driveway is into that parking lot, is that why you bumped that crosswalk mid, in the middle of the street instead of?
Yeah, it was, it was essentially to try to get it at right angle to the, to the curb. The diagonal crosswalks kind of provide some, some, some issues with, with people traveling through the intersection there, so, so getting them at a ninety-degree angle is a better option. It also allows for the installation of the speed table.
Okay. Thank you.
I should, I should have added to the, adding highway lighting, intersection lighting at this location with this alternative as well.
Thanks.
I have a question. On Tenth there, Dave, the speed table would be only headed north? Or you're going to put one going, because people come around off Draper, make that turn, and they just punch it?
Uh, no, no, the speed, so the speed table would slow, slow vehicles down.
Yeah.
Going north and southbound. So, it's, it's, you know, it's elevated from one curb all the way across, so it's elevated across both lanes. So, yeah, vehicles traveling away from Roosevelt School as, as well as vehicles traveling to Roosevelt School will be slowed down by that.
Okay, great.
And then, like I said, for, 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 you know, pedestrians or kids crossing there, they're more visible.
The last six years, I've had a lot of constituents in my district.
Yeah.
A lot of, I've probably had twenty calls by this intersection, at least twenty.
And you can notice, too, we're, we're proposing at that location to have the, the rectangular rapid flashing beacons as well. So, similar to what we have down at Draper and Tenth, at that location.
To follow up on what I think you were asking, was you're talking about the ones that come this way.
Southbound.
Southbound.
So, is there?
That's what we're seeing, too, is people kind of make that curve, and then they just stomp on it. So, this, this will slow that down.
Is it possible to have that sign that says the speed on the opposite side also?
Uh, yeah. We can add one, we can add one on the, on the north leg as well, sure.
I think that would be helpful when they come around to see and, like, slow them down coming to that crosswalk.
Yeah. I mean, they're going to be slowed down physically with that speed table, but? but I don't see any harm in having one of those signs up, you know?
Can you explain a speed table to me?
Yeah, so it's, so it's, the, the crosswalk itself is elevated up about three inches from the rest of the pavement. So the whole ten foot width of the crosswalk is elevated up and then you can see that there, it's tapered down over about?
Like an alternate to a speed bump?
Yeah, but it's like, it's not anything like a speed bump, but it is, that, that, just that visualization of the pavement being higher will slow people down. And then there's some advanced markings as well, so. And then we're, we're proposing to, to put our, our high visibility thermoplastic matting in the, in the crosswalks as well. We found a cheaper option than the hundred thousand dollars, by the way, so.
There wouldn't, Dave, there wouldn't be a stop sign because I, I mean, I travel?
There would not be a stop sign.
Yeah, I travel this intersection a lot and they come hot.
The big concern is that if you, if it was a four-way stop, we think it will back up into, it would back up into the school. You know, I mean, not twenty-four hours a day, but during the busy school times, we think that's going to be an issue. So this, you know, we need to keep northbound and southbound going and not stop them, but we want to do something to slow them down and make them aware of, of, you know, those, those speeds, feedback signs too would be the school ones. So it would be like, you know, school zone ahead, your speed.
Is it an option to do the raised on the north side also? I mean, or is?
Raised on the north?
Like the raised crosswalk on the north side is, or the?
South side?
Southbound, sorry.
I think one location would be enough. I mean, typically they're, they're not in, in, you know, back to back like that, but we can look at that.
Well, I mean, I'd like fire to probably understand that too and look at it and from a, you know, from a response time perspective. But most of the traffic that I see coming in, I know everybody says when they head out of town, but coming into town, people are going at a pretty?
Yeah, and so that's, that's the idea of this, of the speed feedback sign and saying, hey, you need to slow down. And then, you know, when they're, before they enter the intersection, they're going to see that speed table on the other side. So they're already going to be slowing down, but.
Dave, when you said that, that sign's going to say, school zone?
Yeah, yeah.
And show their speed?
Yeah, school zone twenty-five and then speed feedback, yeah.
Oh, nice, okay.
And we could actually program that to be on for, you know, an hour in the morning and then go dark during the day and then go back on, so it's not on all the time. I think that's, that is kind of effective, so people just don't ignore it. When it's on, they pay attention to it.
Is it possible, I don't know with the grant, because we're focusing on one intersection, but like slowing people down there, is it possible to do that speed table north where there's a crosswalk? I know we have like the flashing ones, but we're?
You mean north of Draper?
So when they're coming Draper down, like to have that there to slow them down that whole way?
That's possible.
I think that would take care of the whole issue.
Because well, they, they have a? They have a stop sign at Draper, right, coming southbound, so they're stopped, they have to stop there, so.
But not coming, yeah, Draper?
No, there's a stop.
Going north.
Going north.
Going north, but not?
Well, yeah, on Draper, there's not a, there's not a stop, right? But, so where are you, where are you, I thought you said you were proposing to put them on 10th north of Draper, no? You want them on Draper?
Where that store is, across to Roosevelt School? I think there's flashing on the side.
We can look at that.
But what I'm thinking is the cars that are coming from Draper this way, if it was, what is it called? Speed table? If it was there also, it's going to slow those ones that are headed south on that road. Just a minute.
Yep.
I guess my only comment on this, I know we all come from a little bit of different backgrounds, look at it all differently. From a traffic safety cop standpoint, the light makes the most sense to me. It's inconvenient and I, and I get that.
Traffic signal?
Yeah. Simply because that tells everyone when they can and can't go and it's very clear. And I think if you look at a lot of those traffic accidents, it's because people are pulling out when they shouldn't be.
It's a right, it's a right of way, yeah.
And the other issue that it clears up is it clears up pedestrians. Pedestrians are then told when you should cross and when they have to just sit there and wait. And there's just times when they're going to have to sit there and wait to cross until it's safe. I think it's just a clear definitive marker at that intersection of when you should go and when you shouldn't go. That would be my only recommendation is I understand that that could potentially back things up on Draper. I get that, especially between seven forty and eight ten.
That's our concern as well. Our, our engineers are looking at quick cycle times.
Yeah.
To, you know, green and then you get another green real quick to keep that queue moving, but yeah.
I get that and I think that, you know, when we're looking at a highway safety grant, we need to look at it from a highway safety perspective, which is stopping the accidents. It, it can be more inconvenient for traffic dropping off kids. I, I drive that every single day, school day anyway, and I get it. But pulling out on Kern, on the 10th is, it's almost impossible if there's not a light.
Yeah, right.
And that's, that's where the accidents are happening, are people trying to get on the 10th. And I think that that light slows down traffic all hours and it makes clear definitive times when you can enter and cannot enter the intersection, so.
Yeah, you know, the big thing too is they, they assign a countermeasure benefit to whatever you select. And so that's what, that's what we're looking at too. It's like if the signals, if they're just going to give us such a huge benefit to that, then that's kind of the way to go, at least with the grant application, if you want to get funded, so. We're definitely looking at all of that stuff.
I trust your modeling will come up with whatever is safest, so.
I have a really good traffic engineer. I'm a traffic engineer too, but I, I have to say he's probably a little bit better than me.
Have other council discussion or staff direction on this? Uh, do you need more clear staff direction?
No, I think I got it, yeah.
I would like some, Dave, but thanks.
Okay.
So my preference would be just to make sure that you guys are in agreement that this is the intersection that we're, that you want to submit on and that you are comfortable with whatever Dave comes up with as the most competitive of those options. Because the grant is due on September ninth. So I don't, unfortunately not time for us to bring it back on September fourth and then have him complete an application, I don't think, in five days, so. That's just, I just want to make sure that, I know when, when we have these like high visibility intersections and then we get grants and then, you know, it's three years later and everyone's like, what do we, what do you mean? You're putting in a roundabout or you're going to put in a traffic signal? So I just want to make sure that, yeah, everybody's comfortable with that.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
Why, why is it coming to us in the eleventh hour to where we can't have? I, I would prefer, the council will probably universally prefer that we have these conversations and then you bring back what your analysis is before. I don't like in the blind approving something to where if one of these comes back and we don't like it, I guess we don't have to accept the grant when it's all said and done, but if we could have just gone in a different direction. I guess what I'm asking from staff is why, why is this coming so late?
Yes, I, I can address it. So, so two things on this, and the grant applications typically come with a short fuse. And then second thing is we're, we're trying to coordinate it up with the local road safety program, study or program that we were in the process of developing, so. Trying to get that completed and then roll right into the grant application and they just happen to be back to back. And so it's just kind of the way it worked out.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, that's a good question. Almost always with the transportation grants, whether you're dealing with FCOG or any of those things, they'll open them up and you have a very short window to turn them around. And then it's, it's a little chicken and egg, especially when it comes to how much work you're going to put into it because you kind of have to know that you're comfortable with us going for the grant before we can do a lot of the work. Otherwise, you know, we can pay Dave and his staff a whole lot of money in order to figure out what the option is and then you, and then there's, we might say, we're not really that interested in that project and then we've just spent all that money anyway, so. It's a fine balance that certainly we weigh and, you know. But specifically this one, there was, there, there usually is a very short turnaround.
And we'll have the option, it'll come back before we accept grants and everything else around here. I appreciate that, thank you, thank both of you.
I wanted to say one more thing. I would just like to state, like not just the most competitive, but the safest option. You know, like we want to go for safety and not just to get the grant, we want it to be improved. I think there's a lot of good options here. And then the second thing is, like in my position, I would say then before that grant is completed, I would appreciate you going to the school district and getting their input before moving forward on anything.
Yeah, we're, we're going to try to get a letter of recommendation from them, so they'll be involved. I'd be reached out to them today, so, yeah. Appreciate that.
Are we good now? Comfortable? Okay, thanks, appreciate it, I appreciate the conversation. Last thing we have is future agenda items. We don't have anything listed under future agenda items for tonight. But now we're going to do the council reports and council committee reports. Tonight, we're going to do that just a little bit different. We're going to go council member by council member as opposed to calling out every individual commissioner and everything that's within your sphere of responsibility. We'll just report out on the entire thing for all of your committees and then anything else you would have to report as a council member. We'll start with Councilmember Silva.
Thank you, Mayor Purcell. So Economic Development Committee has not met, but we are scheduled to meet on September fifth at one thirty. And then I did attend the Kingsburg Healthcare District. And as you heard from Chief Banaski, we did the tentative agreement that we had with them. They did approve it and authorize for the, for the fire. And so the other two grants that we had tentatively pending, which was the police grant and for the health and, and mental screening and then the, oh, the seniors Inc. and the meal program, that was also, they agreed to fund those grants as well. So those will be coming before council at a later date, but I thought it was important that all three of those city grants got approved in the board meeting. In addition to that, Board Member Lori Sanders stated that she no longer was interested in serving for another term on the healthcare board. However, she will appear on the ballot because she did submit paperwork similar to what we went through on city council with Michelle Roman and Stacy last term. So I thanked her for her service. And, you know, to recap, Todd Thompson will be running, Tammy Morgan Dooley will be running and Tim Ray will be running. Lori will be on the ballot but does not want the seat. And so voters will be able to vote for two of those three and, and we'll see where the election goes from there, so. Just wanted to update you on that.
That's November election.
Uh, yes, sir. And that's all I had to report, though, South Kings GSA has not met, so that's all I had to report.
Vince?
Okay, thanks, Brendan. Public Safety Committee, we met last Monday. We had a discussion on allocating our funds. We're going to continue that discussion because we have until next July to allocate those to somebody. Planning Commission, we had that joint meeting, you were all there. Our next meeting is September the twelfth. And SKF met two weeks ago. I was unable to go to the meeting with it because of family emergency, so I have nothing on that SKF meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember North?
Our next meeting for bid is on September third, but they did have an unscheduled meeting on Friday. And it was to vote to accept a forty thousand dollar grant from Waste Management to help with their efforts of the new trash cans downtown, so that's great news. Five Cities Center Point, it's going to be on the twenty-seventh at noon and we are the hosts. And Chamber met last week. They meet again on September tenth. Really, this meeting was just about a lot of their bylaws and updating those and organizational things and budget, so nothing to report out beyond that.
Councilmember Smith?
Uh, yes, the Finance Committee, we met just earlier this week. We received one weight rotter study RFP and we're moving forward with that one. The Space Needs Assessment RFP, that, we had five of them come back, so we had some discussion on that. The City Hall lease, we discussed that, it ends in October. And staff is going to work on that a bit, so that'll be coming before us before too long. And the last item we discussed was city council compensation, so that will be coming before us for discussion soon. Community Services Commission, that committee meets next Wednesday, the twenty-eighth at five thirty here in Council Chambers.
Thank you. Uh, for me, the Council of Governments and Rural Transit Authority are both canceled meetings for this month due to lack of business. The ongoing theme with them is just Measure C and how important that's going to be in trying to put the pieces together to get that passed. Next is the City Manager's Report.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a couple of project updates. If you've been in the downtown, you've seen there's a lot of work happening on, on Lewis Street as well as on Draper Street as part of our, our TOD grant. Some of that concrete work will be occurring this week still. And then next week, they will be doing the crack sealing on Wednesday on Draper Street. And then on Thursday is when they're planning to close the road for the entire day to do the slurry seal. So that'll be curb to curb from Sierra Street to California. So we are communicating that with business owners and the bid and the chamber. Once that slurry seal is complete, there will be some time where there is not pavement markings. So we're just going to be asking folks to use common sense when parking and then when the pavement markings will come shortly thereafter, but the, but the slurry seal actually has to cure and so has to be down for a little while. Our Parks Project, so if you've been by Memorial Park, that's well underway. They will be placing the actual restrooms, will be delivered next week. So that will go in, I think it's scheduled for Wednesday of next week. And then the Heritage Park Project is set to begin tomorrow. So that project will begin tomorrow. The playground area will be closed probably through September, so that's the project where they're going to be removing the old wood chips and preparing that for a shade structure and then ultimately finishing it with poured in place rubber. That's the Clean California Grant Project, so all that work is, is ongoing right now. And then next week, Abigail will be hosting all of our third graders, so they all walk through City Hall. She provides them with a presentation on local government. So we're excited to have all the third graders through here, we do that every year, so. That concludes my report.
Awesome, thank you. And that's, the third graders come through next Thursdays?
Every day except next Thursday.
Every day except next Thursday, perfect. Perfect.
The slurry seal next Thursday.
Okay. Okay, at this point, we're going to adjourn the city council meeting and go into closed session for a conference with a real property negotiator.
Thanks, Dave.